The School Board Work Session begins in two minutes. Please take your seats. Again, the School Board Work Session begins in two minutes. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the School Board Work Session begins in one minute.
Good morning. I now call the October 26, 2023 Administrative Briefing and Work Session of the Marion County School Board to order at nine o'clock a.m. Please silence your electronic devices to avoid disturbing others. Mirroring and modeling the way our students begin each day, I ask that you please pause for a moment of silence with us. Please join me. Thank you. I'll now ask the School Board's attorney to explain the rules for this public workshop. Good morning, Attorney Powers.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair. This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form located in the lobby and hand it to the Board Clerk. After the Board and Superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the Board Clerk will call the speakers' names in the order received. And each speaker will have three minutes. The Board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout this meeting as required by the Sunshine Law. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Mr. Greg Davis, can you please provide a proof of publication for today's meeting? Good morning, Mr. Davis.
Yes, ma'am. The notice for the October 26, 2023 Work Session was published in the Ocala Gazette on October 13, 2023. Proof of publication has been attached to Board Docs under "Proof of Publication."
Thank you so much. We will now begin the work session with the Superintendent's Administrative Briefing. Good morning, Dr. Gullett.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Nice to see you this morning. I'm going to call Ms. DeBick forward. I only have one item for the briefing. This also pertains to our topic for today's discussion. And Ms. DeBick will provide an update. As a reminder, we are talking about impact fees, and on Tuesday night, we provided an update on where we were with that. And so she will provide some additional information regarding conversations we've had with the City of Ocala and information pertaining to the two questions we've been asked to get information on for the Board. So, Ms. DeBick, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, and Dr. Gullett. As Dr. Gullett mentioned, I would like to provide a brief recap on the efforts to update the 2006 Educational System Impact Fee. In August of 2022, the Board commissioned a study with Benish consisting of a long-range plan as well as a updated impact fee update, which included fee calculations associated with three land categories and corresponding student generation rates, also known as SGRs. In late May 2023, the Board received presentations on these studies from the consultant. Following those presentations, the Board held two public workshops to hear public input regarding extraordinary circumstances. By August 2023, there was a joint meeting with County Commission. At the conclusion of the August 2023 meeting, both Boards came to consensus that the attorneys would coordinate to effect changes to the ordinance. One of these changes was to expand from three categories to five, and the other was to create a document suitable to the involved parties and which is defensible in regard to anticipated legal challenges. A notable part of this effort is to address the dual rationale nexus requirement of assuring fee collections are spent in the area from which they were collected. Through research, consultation, and collaboration, staff has developed several educational benefit district alternatives for the Board's consideration, which you will hear momentarily. After the August joint meeting, County Commission also held two public workshops on extraordinary need. At the end of September, Attorney Powers sent a message to the city and county attorneys addressing two concerns: the Santa Rosa case and additional pullout subcategories. As I mentioned, Mr. Hurley, he will be presenting shortly on the educational benefit district alternatives, which does address the Santa Rosa case, by addressing the dual rationale nexus requirement of assuring fee collections are spent in the area from which they are collected. As far as the additional pullout subcategories, to my knowledge, additional feedback had not been received at that time. At the October 10 School Board Meeting, the Board requested that we contact Benish to see if they could create a quote based on those additional pullout subcategories the city had requested. The two questions were: a cost estimate for analysis to identify student generation rate per multifamily dwelling unit as grouped by bedroom count, and an estimate for how long it would take to do that work. We spoke with Benish the next day following that meeting, and they did request several pieces of information from the city so they could fulfill that quote. We have been in contact with city staff to see if they have the data available so Benish can move forward with providing a quote. While we have received several spreadsheets of data, we still do not have answers to the following questions. Does the city have data for how many bedrooms are in each unit for all existing units in the city, and how far back does this data go? This feedback is important, as Benish needs to analyze all of the units and how far back it goes. If this level of detail is not available from the city's data, per Benish, the alternative can be using city or property appraiser data to generate an average number of bedrooms per unit for each building. At this time, there are two potential ways of moving forward. The first is to have Benish create a quote based on averages. They did make mention that the sample size for this would be small, and in conversation with city staff this week, they also indicated that the city would be favorable to using averages, but we would like clarification and clarity that all parties are agreeable to this before we move forward with having Benish create that quote. The second option is through something called alternative studies. Impact fee ordinances typically allow for alternative studies where the developers feel their product is not being represented in the fee schedule. They can do a separate study to measure the student generation rate. This process typically starts with a pre-application meeting of the county and the school board, where the methodology, the parameters, comparable developments are discussed. Based on the parameters outlined during this meeting, the developer prepares the study, which is then reviewed by the school board. Upon review, the school district provides a recommendation to the county. This process provides a mitigation option for new development, and in this case, according to Benish, it may also provide some of the needed data. Alternative studies is part of the 2006 ordinance, so this could be another option in moving forward. I would be happy to answer any questions about this update.
Thank you, Ms. DeBick. I'll start with one, and then we'll open it up to additional board questions. So based on the two scenarios that you've just presented, one scenario would be at the cost of the school district to ensure that Benish does do an additional study calculation based on averages of multifamily units. And based on information we've received, that may not be as easy as it sounds, because one apartment complex may have all one and two bedrooms, and one may only have studio and one bedroom. So I understand that the challenges that could come with an average. So that's interesting. But the second option that you've presented does sound like that would not come at the cost of the district. That would actually be on developers and/or builders within the community who chose to produce an alternative study based on their product that they're putting into the community.
That is correct.
Okay. And because this is the first time I'm hearing of this, and I don't know if any other board members had heard that, do we have any indication that there are developers that are pursuing or interested in that? And this is probably a premature question, but do... I know that Dr. Gullett has a group of individuals, community citizens, that gather to discuss this. Do we have any indication that there is anyone in the community that is interested in pursuing that alternative study? Dr. Gullett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We haven't met with the task force since this information has just come to us, so we're... You're hearing it first. We just have this information, so whatever the Board would like to discuss today, we'll take it forward. I could certainly reconvene the group, but I have... We have not had any conversation with them.
And certainly, understanding that the second option, again, not at the cost of the district and ultimately not at the decision of this Board, would rely on business businesses to choose to take that approach. And we would need to have timely consideration whether that approach is going to be undertaken. And so I'm not sure what the timeline would look like for us to consult with whomever that would look like, to say, are you going to gather and create this alternative study? Again, that option is sort of out of the hands of this Board, other than knowing that those who've brought forth this consideration and this concern potentially are the very same individuals who would be those who would choose to fund a separate study that would be considered an alternative for consideration. Okay, that answers all of my questions. Board, any additional questions, comments? Dr. James.
Thank you, Ms. DeBick. So if a community member decided to move forward with the alternative study, our study would be on hold, and moving forward with our ordinance would be on hold until we received information from a community member.
The way I understand that it works, and Attorney Powers can jump in, and Mr. Hurley here as well, in the 2006 ordinance, alternative studies is an option. It's written into the ordinance, so any developer at any time can say, these impact fees don't work for me, so I'm going to commission my own study and start this process. So as far as our ordinance right now, and impact fees being suspended, I'm not sure how that plays a role into everything.
Well, and I think that the prior... The prior interlocal agreement discussed that in terms of the developer who's building a specific subdivision, not creating some district-wide phenomenon. So I don't believe that was the intent. I mean, I'd have to review the language, see if you can apply it that way.
That's kind of my question, because it seems like... And I'm certainly not. I have... I'm just getting this information like everyone else. But it would seem like if I was someone who did... And this wasn't working for me, because I was building a specific product, I would do a study. And then, of course, we're on hold, waiting for somebody else's work to get done, at whatever timeline they would want to get it done, for us to submit our ordinance. That is my understanding. We would need that information to submit our ordinance, right?
The way that I believe it works, and again, I'll have to review, but the way that I believe it works is that the intention of that was that we would proceed forward with whatever study we have or had just in the past, the existing structure that was there. We would then, if someone said, look, I'm building a new class of housing or a different type of housing, and I don't believe the numbers work for me, then for my particular development, I may say, here, let me provide you with an alternative bunch of data for my group that I believe stands out from the standard. But that would be independent, and that would be utilized as a one-off for that particular, not even class of housing, but that particular development.
Correct. So it wouldn't be applicable to an absence of a potentially category for impact fees for an entire municipality?
That does not appear to be the case, nor my understanding, so I mean...
So I'm not even sure... What I'm getting at is I'm not even sure that that's going to solve the problem that is as it's presenting right now. The problem as it presents right now is we have an absence of a building type within the City of Ocala and their building department. And so to go ask XYZ developer who's building a singular development, to do this is fine, but it's kind of like putting in like a pud. Like, I'm going to go build this specific, and it's going to be out of zoning, so I'm going to put in a request to build something that's not zoned for this area, because it's important for me that I'm providing this product in this particular area. I'm trying to change the zoning or the use of the land. It's not changing the entire county's makeup. It's changing this particular parcel's makeup to meet the needs for this particular community. That's how I'm understanding this would be applied here. And so that is not the purpose of what we're trying to accomplish. I can appreciate it as a potential solution, but I don't think it's going to solve what we're trying to do here, which is a countywide and obviously citywide application for building types. So what I personally, as a board member, need to know is if there is a delay in communication between our department and the city, as a board member, I have a great working relationship with the city. So I know that this board member would be more than happy to pick up the phone and call Pete Lee and say, hi, Pete, this is what I need. And I know that Pete Lee would execute that. He and I personally have a great relationship. So if there is... I don't think we need to go five, six, seven business days with waiting on questions. Either we are working on it, or we are not working on it, or we don't have it, but the absence of responses is not acceptable. And I know that Mr. Lee agrees with that. We had a phone conversation about it on Tuesday. So I just need to know, as a board member, to be supportive of staff getting this accomplished, and I have no problem having a conversation with anyone, if that's something that would help move this along. But I don't think that option two is going to work personally.
Madam Chair.
Reverend Cummings.
My question, Ms. DeBick, and thank you again, too, for showing us these two options. So with the alternative studies, you could actually... Could we actually have five or six developers submitting five or six different plans at the same time?
Potentially. It's on a case-by-case basis.
So that just kind of, to me, that muddies the water even more, because we're trying to figure out what's... What each developer is wanting. Guys, when I'm looking at this, that, to me, that kind of delays the process and just keeps us kind of spinning our wheels. So I like the average. I guess I would have to go with the average if we're going to do something.
Dr. Gullett.
Madam Chair, I'd like to go back to Board Member James's comments about timeline, just so that we're clear. Ms. DeBick, can you recap? Because it go back to, we've had all public discussions on this topic, so I want to put that out there. It is our intention to work with all of our agencies and communities, but we've done this all very publicly, which I'm very proud of, and this is the way it needs to be done. But to recap back to the communication and the request, following the Board discussion the next day, can you take it from there so that it's very clear what our communication's been in our request?
Absolutely. So the next day, so October 11, following the Board conversation during the 10th School Board Meeting, we were in touch with Benish, and we talked about the conversation that happened and the questions that were initially asked. We had a call with Benish that Thursday and then sent a set of questions to city staff. We received some responses back, and then on October 18, we sent another email clarifying about the spreadsheets and the data that we had received. As of Tuesday, we had not received responses back to that particular email. Later that day, we did have a phone conversation with city staff, which we received some more information. Yesterday, Wednesday, we received a few more spreadsheets of data, but it's still not exactly what Benish was asking for clarification on.
Yes, and I'm aware of that timeline, and so... Which is why I asked the question, and I asked on Tuesday night, because I was aware of it on Tuesday night as well. So if we need... I don't mind being the person, or anyone can be the person, but we just... There's... No, I know that city leadership is not okay with days going by without it being taken care of. So whatever it's going to take for us all to get answers and then move forward, that's fine. And to what Reverend Cummings said, I'm only okay with averages if all the attorneys are okay with the averages. So I know that averages are not always best. So if the attorneys in all of the municipalities, the county and the city, and our attorney all say averages work, then, okay, cool, if all the attorneys say that. But if that's not the case, then I'm not cool with averages.
So to weigh in here again, and I know that we are still waiting on the information, so let's just add full clarity as to what has been requested. So what has been requested, and as was shared on Tuesday evening, we all individually had meetings with city staff and an elected official on the city council, individually. We didn't meet collectively, but we all individually did meet with them. And what was given at that time was a list of apartment complexes, multifamily units, by parcel number. And parcel number, you can have one parcel number for an entire complex. Parcel number does not get into the level of detail for the school district and Benish to be able to say, unit 101 has two bedrooms in it, and we have three children living there, and unit 102 has one bedroom in it, and there are no children living there. Parcel number doesn't get us there. So to my knowledge, and this is what I shared in my individual meeting, as well as what I've told and actually left a voicemail with Pete Lee myself, what we're asking for is does the city... That's what I'm asking for. Does the city have that level of detail to say they know exactly the unit numbers, the exact addresses, and which address and/or unit number aligns with a bedroom total? And so with that information unavailable at this point, I'm not certain if the city does have that level of detail. And because I'm going to make an assumption, which is a really bad thing to do, but because they did agree to averages yesterday, perhaps the level of detail that has been requested by Benish does not exist at the city. I don't know that to be fact, but that's an assumption at this point. The other piece to this is, we're only talking about the city, and the level of information we all received, or some of us received a handout from the city in those individual meetings, I believe, showed 5,000 units. But the study that we have, that Benish has already conducted, shows, I believe, about 15,000 multifamily units in the countywide. So part of the question therein lies is, it's not just these 5,000 units that came online in city limits between the time the ordinance has been suspended. It's not just those units. It's also every multifamily unit in Marion County proper, not just one municipality. Do we have that... Oh, sorry. Do we have that level of detail available at all? In a conversation I personally had with a property appraiser, the property appraiser, from my understanding, again, this is just individual board member Allison Campbell in my own research, they may have a parcel number listed, and in the notes in the property appraiser, they may list, this building has this many units with this number of bedrooms, but how that data looks may vary from appraiser to appraiser and may vary from complex to complex, because each one of those has come online at a different time. They're appraised, obviously, you know, on a regular basis through the property appraiser. But again, property appraiser's looking at parcel ID. So apartment complex with 300 units may have one parcel ID, and the level of detail available from the property appraiser may not be what is being requested. So that's... I just wanted to lay all of that out there. I think that's where we are, if I'm not mistaken. We are at a point where we don't know who has the data that we're asking for, and it appears that the city may not. I don't know that to be fact, but it appears that they may not. And if they don't, then what are our next steps? If, in fact, that's what this Board wants to do. If this Board wants to pursue getting to that level of detail for a study, it's going to rely... We would have to... Benish would have to rely on going to individual apartment complexes, and I'm not going to name them by name, but we all know who they are, and saying, can you tell us, unit 101, how many bedrooms are in it? Unit 102, how many bedrooms are in it? And it's going to be relying on businesses to give us that information, if there's nobody else that has it. And I could be wrong. So I'm... That's where I am with it. I believe that's the information that I believe we're still seeking. So, Board, Dr. James, I believe you had something to say.
I just don't... I don't think that that's accurate, so...
Okay. Please share with me the accuracy.
Building departments have the data. When you submit a permit, and even if you change your permit, building departments have the data.
Yes, ma'am, they do. They have the data, which is what we've all received from the city. They have the data based on building numbers. So like, let's say apartment complex A has three buildings, and one building has 10 two bedrooms and five one bedrooms, and whatever it has in that building, yes. But to say, the way student generation rates are calculated, are based on students actually living in apartments and/or addresses. So I've used the illustration before. I lived at 1644 Cree Arch in Virginia Beach that was an apartment complex. It had two bedrooms in it. 1642 Cree Arch had one bedroom in it. And those are specific addresses that are calculated for student generation rate, to say, here are all the addresses of the students of Marion County Public Schools, and here's how that aligns with single-family, mobile home, townhome and condo, all the different categories that we've now broken out, the five categories. So yes, the building department knows exactly how many bedrooms were built within an apartment complex, but they may not know the specific address. And that's where we are. Ms. DeBick.
If I may share, the example we did send to city staff when we were asking for these questions was, if a student's address is 100 North Street, Unit A, we need to know how many bedrooms Unit A has. The data currently shows total number of one-bedroom units, two-bedroom units in each building, but not the number of bedrooms per unit. Our methodology endeavors to match student addresses with the exact dwelling unit address. So therefore, we need some... The same extent plus the number of bedrooms in that unit in order to be able to make the accurate SGR calculation.
Which, thank you. That's exactly what I believe I just said. And so that's been the question we've asked of the city, and that has not been a response we've received yet.
Correct.
Okay. So perhaps, again, as I stated previously, I was making an assumption, but perhaps that level of detail does not exist within the building department. I don't know that, but if it hasn't come back from the building department, I think that's the question we're asking of the city and potentially of the county as well. Because again, this isn't just about the units in the municipality of the City of Ocala. Ultimately, this will be an interlocal agreement that will need to be approved by all municipalities, including the county.
Madam Chair. May I ask Mr. Hurley, if he has any additional information or insight to add? I know you work in more detail with this work more regularly and have had more conversations with the City of Ocala. Thank you.
I would say, I just want to mention that as a certified planner...
I would say, I just want to mention that as a certified planner, and I've been a planner for about 30 years, 30-odd years, most of it here, the vast majority of it here, I've been dealing with property appraiser data and local government data for 25 of that, and the detail, I would agree with Dr. James, there is detail there, it's in pockets, and it can be retrieved, but it's a question of what's the length of time, what's the effort, what's the labor intensity of that, of digging it out, compiling it, and providing it all in a usable format. The same thing, I would say, you know, I've been working with property appraiser data since before there was GIS and you couldn't manipulate it in a computer, and Rudy Muckinfuss was the property appraiser, and that data has become better over time, more complete, more accurate, more full, but it's still not there yet. There are certain fields of information that they can provide, like the year that a structure was built, that's tied to the parcel ID and the address, and maybe even an apartment number in some instances, but the missing component there is the number of bedrooms tied to a given building, as you were explaining, Dr. Campbell. So, there's some of that in isolated pages of the data, and it would become a matter of not necessarily physically for a developer or anybody, or Benish or consultant to go out to the location, but rather by proxy, you would go to the page and you'd need to dig through it. And the last thing I would say, and I made the analogy of, we go to a meeting, I take notes that I understand, you take notes that you understand, we're both at the same meeting, we both made notes on the same information. There are 20 property appraisers that are field appraisers, and they add notes in there at the end of their work, and that's how it's compiled. So, it's not as though it lends itself to writing a script that could go in and systematically identify, here's everywhere that this changes from building to apartment to bedroom, you're gonna find a comma and pluck that out. And so, what we've received back from the city, I believe, has been an earnest effort, they've provided what they have. We haven't received a point-blank response that says, "We don't have it just the way you're asking for it."
But it exists.
Yes, yeah, I mean, and, but I also would say, we don't know the consistency or the extent of it, because you gotta dig through all of those instances.
Sorry, Ms. Thoreau, I didn't mean to laugh out loud. You've seen more multifamily housing in other areas than just the City of Ocala. I understand it, that the city is very leery about legal challenges, they were very, they've been very clear about that, they got creative with the fire fee, and that didn't go so well. So, I understand them being gun-shy. However, I sit on the Marion County School Board, and I am here in my task to do what's best for our district, and keep things moving, and work collaboratively and moving, and work collaboratively and diplomatically with all stakeholders, but what's the expedient solution, so we can keep moving forward on this? It's been long enough. That's what I got.
Okay. My recommendation, and we've not, none of us have discussed this before, to my knowledge, is that we would just go forward recommending, for an up or down vote, the study that we received and the calculations that the consultant has provided. They're a long-established, credentialed consultant, and I'm sure that they have a defensible approach to this, they've got a consistent methodology, and also, I would add to that, my understanding of what the city, the city's concerned for is legitimately, so, a product that's forthcoming, some of which, they're entitlements that have been approved, but there, some are probably a part of the way out of the ground, and maybe even some occupied or that, but the number of them, which there are a sizable number, and I understand that to be their concern, are forthcoming. And so, we don't have data that we can measure on that. So, this is why I'm saying, we have a complete dataset that's been analyzed and a calculation made by the consultant. The concern is for what's coming in the future, and I think this whole discussion is good about consistency and completeness of data, and if we can fix it up or start tracking that over time, then as we go forward and we start to produce these units that the city's concerned about, we'll be able to get better numbers in terms of student generation rates, but it's an open question as to how many students are coming out of these particular types of units right now. And that overlaps with the need for specific data string that identify, that we can sync up a student address with a particular building, unit, number of bedrooms, so that we can deter, you know, that the consultant can determine those numbers.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hurley, Hurley for your recommendation and for your longstanding expertise in this area. That's helpful. Additional board comments, thoughts on the superintendent's administrative update?
I'm gonna offer, actually, one more question to this, and this potentially is to Attorney Powers in the process. Again, just receiving this information of the potential for a developer to put in their own study about whatever complex, it's a twofold question. So, that would be on a case-by-case basis by just one developer here, there, or whatever, or could an entire group, such as, I'll just call them Marion County Building Industry Association, put in and do a study on all units of a certain, and would that, so that's question one. Then my second question is, could the school board and/or municipalities, as we proceed, move forward with the draft ordinance that we have, in addition to what we're gonna talk about today and the purpose of today's work session, move forward and potentially, if we had at least three board members ready to move forward with what we already have, with those five individual categories from Benish, and we moved that on, then after that, an alternative study could be in process that we then would analyze and review after impact fees potentially had already been reinstated. And so, would someone's alternative study that we are yet to be named or yet to know about, would that, just the knowledge of a study being conducted, actually hold us up in the process? Or would it be something, we could move forward, all things considered, school board move forward, send it to county commission, they say yes, send the amended interlocal agreement to all the, everybody says yes, and it gets, you know, there are 90 days and it gets started, and then six months from now, an alternative study comes up, and then we analyze that at that time? So, I had two questions there.
Okay. The first one, I can answer. The second is not a purely legal answer, it's more of a decision-making and political answer that I can't answer legally, because different attorneys, in fact, representing different clients, Mr. Sexton and I both may have the same information and may disagree on some of those things. So, but as to the individual studies, and I can, I would seek to rely a little bit on Mr. Hurley as well with this, but I believe it's common practice that when a school board has adopted, or a county has adopted, an impact fee, an impact fee structure, and then significant new development is occurring in an area, if that, it's almost by way of exemption, if they indicate that our product and what we're putting here is something that is different, it's a planned community that has a specific type of character, then we would generate our own data. I've seen those studies where they generate for that particular subdivision, here's what we anticipate would be the overall, they'd use their own methodology, but it would be a traceable methodology that would indicate, here's why we believe that ours should be treated differently, and perhaps the impact fees should be this amount as opposed to that amount, why it should be on the lower end, again, with our collections, lower end would be, as proposed, somewhere around $2,000, as opposed to the higher end, which, again, would be somewhere closer to $4,000. And so, and depending upon the individual type. So, that allows for a sort of variance, almost, for that particular community. Now, as to a particular individual house, or individual home, or trailer and lot, or whatever it might be, that's a little more difficult to show, because you're not talking about a planned, you know, community. So, as to those individual studies, I don't believe that what's being envisioned, and I, again, this is the first I'm hearing of it, but I don't believe what's being envisioned is, have someone else just replicate everything that Benish did for a countywide proposal and say, "Here, here's actually what you should be using, forget what Benish did." I don't think that's what's being proposed. But certainly, allowing for individual studies would, you know, I don't believe that there's any difficulty or problem with that, and I think, in fact, it's a matter of routine So, those are, as to whether, the second part of your question was as to whether the school board approval process can proceed forward, ultimately, this is something that, for the county to approve it and for the collection to occur as well, and for all parties to be satisfied, all parties have to have some, you know, agreement that these terms work for them. Perhaps the best way to do that is to consider the things that we were just discussing about sort of variance studies for particular items. I don't, I don't know what they're envisioning for such a study, so I can't really comment more on that, because I don't know. I think it might, knowing where we are, I would think it might be a poor idea to move forward and push on with the thing that we have fixed, which is the dual rational nexus test in Santa Rosa County stuff with the educational benefit districts you're about to hear about today. There's a level of confidence there that I don't see any problem with. As to how many categories there should be and all those factors, that's the other one that presents a little more of a dilemma. So, we could move forward with the educational benefit districts today, certainly, and get some consensus as to which factors we'd like to choose, but that's one half of the two, that's one of the two questions that we have. The other part of the question is the categories, what do we want? The three that we started out with, with the old, original ordinance, I was expanded to five, are we going from five to a couple of more? Are we expanding it to 20, 30? What are we doing? And so, that, I don't believe, I believe proceeding down that path for any length of time is very likely to just meet a roadblock and you have to then back up and go a different direction again. So, that's a decision for the board.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Any additional comments or questions on the superintendent's administrative briefing? Okay, is there any public comment on the superintendent's administrative briefing? Thank you, Ms. DeBick and Mr. Hurley and Dr. Gullett, for that briefing. That then leads us into item 4.1. Dr. Gullett?
Thank you. It does, Madam Chair, so with Ms. DeBick still standing, she's gonna go ahead and kick us off with the educational benefit districts, and Mr. Hurley will join for this presentation of these options. Thank you.
Welcome again, Ms. DeBick.
Thank you. As we discussed during the briefing, one of the two pieces was making sure that the ordinance is defensible in regard to anticipated legal challenges, and an effort is to address the dual rational nexus requirement of assuring that the fees collected are spent in the areas from which they are collected. And Mr. Hurley is going to come forward and share the information and options on the educational benefit districts for the board's consideration.
Good morning again, everyone. As I start on this, I'd like to mention that I'm gonna provide a few bits of introductory information related to educational benefits districts, or EBDs, and then I'll present, proceed to present the three alternatives that we have for you, and make comments on each about how they're formed or what the components are. Okay, so, bullet one, with regard to educational benefit districts, these are areas that are used to associate and dedicate expenditure or fee collections with source areas. This is a direct effort to address one prong of the dual rational nexus. They help to ensure compliance with the dual rational nexus requirement for impact fees. Something that occurs to me, having seen over time when we collected impact fees previously in the three or four years, is that we were concerned about small balances. At a district-wide perspective, we had a small balance from time to time, and was it enough to be able to spend that on the projects that qualified for it? So, when we go to five, I'm just thinking about there being, you know, particular balances, a small balance in some area or another, is there a project that that's proportional to, or would there be supplemental monies to help with that project? And the last bullet is, the impact fee ordinance requires language regarding expiration and refunding, as well as terms and conditions for transferring amounts to an adjacent educational benefit district. So, the suggestion there is that, is there a way that we can incorporate language into an ordinance that would help us in the event that we got to, say, we have 200,000 sitting in one of these educational benefit districts, and that may help us, that we could spend all of that by transferring it to an adjacent benefit district, help us to make up the difference, or to help us expend that before expiring? The last comment I'll make there, which I haven't put in bullet form, is that our 2006 impact fee ordinance had an expiration date of six years, I believe it was. So, money would be spent and carried over, and I don't think I need help right now, but if so, I'll go to Ms. Boston Ellis, in a rolling sense, so that you knew the balance for a given year, and then that would need to zero out as you moved along as time passed. So, that could be a concern. I've spoken with Broward County, their school district there, who uses educational benefit districts, they have a very different set of facts that pertain to them as a large metropolitan area county, but one of the things is that they do not have an expiration date, so once the monies are paid, then it's theirs. I had always been under the impression, when we had our impact fee so many years ago, that it was some sort of a requirement, apparently it's something that's desirable, you know, and that was an effort to balance. If you didn't spend it, then it should go back to where it came from, just kind of a reverse principle, I would say, of the spending notion. So, I'll move on with the boundary alternatives. So, option one is high school attendance areas, we are all familiar with these, and each of the three is about tracking collections and expenditures, because at the core of it, ultimately, that's what we're gonna wanna do. When we collect monies, we're gonna need to tabulate how much has been collected in a particular area, and how much has been expended, and there are requirements for the district to do an annual report, and then that gets forwarded for consideration, that's something that's in the, in the interlocal agreement. As, I didn't, I didn't create this high school attendance area, but the other two I've made up at some time or another, and as we see them, I'll explain that. What I would comment about the high school attendance areas is that their boards, the boundaries are board-determined, so the boundaries are subject to change based on things like total enrollment, development of new schools, or some other aspect. And, you know, as those change, then we would have differences in, you know, the collection areas. I don't know enough about it to say whether that would be a problem or not, presumably not, because when the boundary moves, then whatever the monies are, they would just shift, they would stay, we should make... they would stay, we should make them stay, the balances stay with wherever the previous boundaries were. So moving on to Option Two. Option Two, I looked at some notable areas from the county's comp plan. In the blue, the blue in the northwest, that's largely the farmland preservation area, and then the light blue in the middle is largely the urban growth boundary, as established in the county's comp plan. The others I made up based on census tracts, and I opted for census tracts because they're the largest geography or the largest polygons that exist where the census data is collected. And so at least every 10 years, you would get a, a reliable report that talks about the number of housing units in those census tracts, the number of people, a variety of statistics that come with the census. There are also American Community surveys that come out every five years, and I think they have a rolling three-year product. I'm not sure of the extent of the data that comes with the, the rolling product. But, so we would have that consistency in terms of a framework to see what we're observing, what we're collecting, what we're seeing for growth in the schools, and some sort of checking, you know, reference from the census data. In addition, on this map, and as I created it, I had conversation with Ms. DeBick, and, and I, you know, I put in schools, the multicolored dots are the school locations, and then the letters are the, the locations of a few of our schools that we're considering building with the funding that we're talking about now. Those, so I mentioned that they're farmland preservation area, urban growth boundary, and the census tracts. I think I've covered all of that. Okay? And now I'll move on to the last one, and that is something that you've all seen previously, is the school board member residence areas. And this is what Broward County uses. Broward County started with their educational benefit districts back before school concurrency existed, and it was an effort because they were growing substantially, you know, for year after year after year. And I can remember when they had annexation wars and the fights for territory, and there were 16 municipalities. I believe there are now 27 municipalities, and a very small percentage of the undeveloped land in Broward County, the unincorporated land, is a very small percentage of the overall county. Over that time, was explained to me by their plan, the school district planner, who has also been there throughout all of it, was that there came a point in time where there was a discussion about the dual rational nexus component, and ensuring that it was tied to the areas that were representative, or where the, the development was happening. Anyways, the, the decision was to go with school board member residence areas. What I, my final comments on this are that when I developed this map for the school board member residence areas, I was using census data at the time, and rather than census tracts, which are the largest of the geographies or the boundaries, I used, I believe, there's groups, there's block groups, and there are blocks. So the geography, the, the areas get smaller. So I used those other levels to get down to refine the numbers of population here for purposes of satisfying the statute. So one, one thing I would say about this is that school board member residence areas are statutorily required, so you've got some sort of a legal requirement associated with this, if you were to use these. You know, there's a purpose to it, and where you, where any member can come from, and just how many pop, how, what the population is in those areas. These two will change over time, but I think the allowance is that they can be changed at any time by majority vote, vote of the board in only odd years, so that it's not an election or an even year, and that would help prevent conflicts with when the census is being taken. So, I think that pretty much concludes my remarks. They can be updated, you know, that speaks to amendments. I don't know that, you know, Mr. Powers and I talked about this initially, before I started to work on it, and at the time, it wasn't something that was on my radar about the, the need for, or eventual amendments to it and what that might imply. And I don't know if you have or wish to make any comments on that now, but that's, that's just something that, you know, seemingly could be incorporated into the, the ordinance, and understandably, if other places use it, there must be some way to do it, so.
Yes, and when we place educational benefit districts within the ordinance, one of the factors that goes along with that is a, is a term or condition for allowing transferal of amounts between adjacent educational benefit districts, if there's a showing of good cause as to why that needs to occur. And then additionally, allowing a provision for future amendment of the map data based on, and linking it to an event that would be a change in school board member residence areas, or whatever. Essentially, then would be a matter of just containing the, the language that allows us to shift from one residence area to an expanded or moved residence area. And those are, again, in other ordinances that I've seen that do have educational benefit districts, they have that amendment language within them. So I could definitely pull that up, use it.
Thank you. If, I just want to make this remark, and I'll take any questions. That is, so I said I conclude my remarks or comments there, that's on the maps, and then I just have, you know, our next steps comments, but please, Madam Chair.
Okay. Vice Chair Thoreau.
Thank you. So these educational benefit districts, we're discussing them because we want to make sure that the ordinance meets the dual rational nexus test.
That's correct.
Okay. With that in mind, what I need to know is, what is the recommendation? Because if we're sitting here listening to this, to make sure that what recommendation we choose has the best chance of meeting the dual rational nexus test, if this is ever litigated, that's the one I want to go with.
There are multiple criteria, and it is largely, we have to show that we have given a reasonable analysis as to, it's, it's the school board's determination, that there's been a reasonable analysis to account for the factors that might show differences in growth between the areas. However, ultimately, to meet the dual rational nexus test, the most important criterion is that money that is raised within a particular district for an impact. If your, if your particular address is 100 Southwest First Street, then the, the impact fee for that development on that property goes to a school that would be served within that particular district.
Right, and I understand all that. And so what I need to know as a school board member is which one, in the opinion of yourself and Mr. Hurley, he best meets that. As I sat here and listened, I thought, well, we are a choice district. So while we think we know where development is going to be occurring down the road, and the Benish study clearly shows that, we are a choice district. So depending on what we put where, there could be an influx, and also an exodus, which is why I'm not sure, just as a board member, that I like the school board residencies, because that's only during odd years. Well, we've learned how fast a year can go by. If I've learned anything else in this process, I have learned how fast a year can go by. So, as a board member, not as an expert, I like the flexibility of, of Option One, because we could be nimble. I think I shared about the school board residencies, and then the, the census, you know, I'm not as sure about those. But we've been discussing this, and discussing this, and discussing this, and I am ready to get some solid answers, a path forward that is defensible, and move on to the many other things that we need to be dealing with as, as a district. So that, that's why I'm being so direct.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Before going to another board member, I'll go ahead and weigh in here. So originally, my thought process actually was a bit towards the school board residence areas, because I knew that was mapping that had just been done based on census and population data, and it was the most current map, to my knowledge, that we had that even addressed something countywide. My concern with Option One is that we haven't changed high school attendance boundaries in quite some time, at least since I've been sitting on the board. I'm not certain if Reverend Cummings or Ms. Thoreau have even touched the high school attendance boundaries. We just adjusted some elementary school boundaries and, and middle school boundaries, and that was quite an ordeal. So, the reason I am not leaning towards Option One would also be for what we have just encountered with our recent changing of attendance boundaries. What I appreciate about Option Two is something I've been saying for quite some time, since I've been a board member, and Mr. Hurley, he may remember me just mentioning, why does the school board not look at the urban growth boundary? And whenever we consider what the county is, county and city essentially, working together on their strategic plans, their comprehensive plans, they have an urban growth boundary where they are anticipating all of the growth to occur. And if we use the urban growth boundary as one of those educational benefit districts, and we also put the amendment included that says anything in that area can be spent in an adjacent, with given reasonable clarification, whatever that says, the urban growth boundary's right in the middle. So essentially, all of the other districts, educational benefit districts, are adjacent. So i- if we went with this option, let's say the urban growth boundary that the county chooses to expand it a bit, well, we are, or the property that we purchase to help alleviate pressure on a certain school is just outside, or just in one of these other, but yet we are able to use the money in the urban growth boundary educational benefit district for that. That's the way I'm understanding this to be, and so that's why I would lean towards Option Two. And if I'm mistaken in that, Mr. Hurley, please correct me.
No, ma'am. I think you're accurate, in that it's a, it's a kind of a hub setup, and, and the school board member boundaries have the same attributes to it. There's one of the, one of the member areas that's effectively the hub.
Thank you. Other board member comments on educational benefit districts maps? Ms. Conrad?
Sure. I too am in favor of Option Two, specifically for the reason that we have some flexibility. I think it's important that we're able to help the area next to us, and I like that the urban growth area is central and can be accessible to the other districts. And I just, any, anytime we have the opportunity to be flexible with our finances, I'm for that, because so many times our hands are tied. So that, that's what the sell feature is for Option Two for me. I also, I have one other question. Do we know, are there other districts that, what they use, is there one that's used more frequently than other? What's the popular choice throughout the state of Florida?
I don't know that. And educational benefit districts are somewhat, and I say this with some reluctance, but somewhat like concurrency service areas. So there's more, the reason I even mention that is there's more data on concurrency service areas and what's used than there is on educational benefit districts. And in truth, I think that, I shouldn't say in truth, it's my opinion, my understanding after looking at this and doing research, that educational benefit districts started out before concurrency. It was an effort, you know, the pressure was on, and there was an effort to address, how are we going to do this? And then fairness played into it. I, I, so, that's a bit of speculation on my part, but that's the impression I get from the research I've done.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Other board member thoughts? Dr. James?
So I would, I would have to disagree with Vice Chair Thoreau regarding the high schools, and primarily because if we were building a new high school, it's opening less than four years from now. So when we open that new school and we create a new zoning pattern, my concern would be, one could presume that we, we've just put a lot of money into something, and so maybe this is a question for Ms. Boston Ellis, but if we then create a new zone that starts generating impact fee revenue, what is that money going to be used for if we just built a $100 million school? Can it, can it, it has to be used for future growth, not past. And so I think that the purpose, yes, it could build a future elementary school, or a future middle school, or a future wing, but I think the largest cost we'll ever, we'll ever take on is a high school. And if we've used other money to build the high school, creating a then zoning pattern around a, a new high school, which is what we will have to do in less than four years, that money being generated won't be able to go debt service that, because it has to be for future growth, not prior growth. So that would be the, the pain point I have with the high school attendance zones. I just don't know that it, in theory, I think it sounds good, but I don't think it would serve the purpose we're looking to accomplish personally. So I could go either way with Option Two or Three. My question would be, I know you said that school board zoning, school board lived-in residences can change on non-election years. When is the last time school board residences were changed?
Right after the census. I believe this was '21.
Twenty-one on the map.
Prior to '21, when did it change?
Uh, there, there was one, I can't recall.
2011, I think, right after the 2010 census. So it's about every 10 years.
So every 10 years it changes.
Right. It has to, but the statute enables the board to change it if it.
Totally.
Or if you prove the development or the population has skewed to the.
Yeah, but realistically, if we're looking at historical data, it's an every 10-year thing for Marion County. My question then would be, who is in charge? Because we know now this, I, I, what I'm understanding is the census drives, for the most part, Option Three's boundaries changing. We can certainly go on a limb and, and have a discussion about it and change it in an off-election year, but generally speaking, the census data drives the boundaries to make them even. So for Option Two, what drives a change in those boundaries?
I would say that that would be amendments to the county's comprehensive plan. So for example, another, the, despite the unlikelihood of it, but exaggerating to make the point, another whack comes along at some various place or another, and then they go through a large process with the county, and the urban growth boundary bulges out here and is amended.
Okay.
I would expect that we would amend like that. I also know, in fact, there are support services areas, or service areas, urban service areas that the county is working on, and they're discussing that now, they have a consultant. So they'll be coming back, and these will be two, two, at least two areas, one around the shores and one Marion Oaks, that we know already are substantially densely developed. And they'll be identifying those with boundaries. So that could, you know, they could be added as a different collection, or an additional collection area, service area, or they could just be fitted within, you know, to the nearest census tract boundary into any one of these that's here.
Okay.
So that would be an amendment.
So, and when a boundary changes, Ms. Boston Ellis can nod, but we would then have to redirect the money based on the new boundary that's been established, to go to a different, a different, if address 1,000 First Street is now in this instead of that, then, then if there's development there, it would have to go to the new boundary, because the boundary would have changed. So I would draw extreme hesitation as a board member to rely on another municipality or another board to change our boundaries. So what I just heard you say was that the county is going to be the primary municipality that would get to, or, or governing body that would get to change the boundaries for Option Two. I would draw incredible hesitation with that, because then we may be collecting in an area, and the boundary change. an area, and the boundary change, for whatever reason, and I'm not saying it's not a good reason for their part, but it may inadvertently cause hindrance on what we're looking to accomplish or the planned growth that we may be having. And so for that reason alone, as a school board member, I'm going to vote for the one that has the least amount of presumed change and the change we are 100% in control of, which is option three. Because then, we can decide we want to change it if we want to change our lived-in zones, if we see exceptional growth in an area. Otherwise, we could just change it every 10 years with the census data, but regardless, we are not require, we are not reliant on other people to change our boundaries. So that would be why option three is my choice.
Thank you, Dr. James. May I ask, or I'm going to ask a clarifying question on that. So what we would be coming to consensus to and potentially approving in our draft ordinance would be a snapshot in time. And so while potentially the county six, eight months from now chooses to change one of these boundaries, doesn't necessarily mean, and this is a question, it doesn't necessarily mean that ours would automatically change. It would then take an amendment that this board would approve or not approve, because right now, when we're making the original judgment call on educational benefit districts for our draft ordinance, we're looking at a snapshot in time that is the current urban growth boundary. And so while I appreciate Dr. James' concerns, it doesn't automatically mean that ours would just change because theirs changed. It would still require an amendment and a vote by this board to determine whether or not we wanted to amend it. Is that accurate?
I understand it the same way. And that's one, I'm glad you mentioned this. I'm glad this conversation developed because I didn't want to confuse, risk confusing things initially. So the point that I mentioned about the changes to the school board member residence areas, and this being an EBD map, is you can start off by using those boundaries, and eventually, the school board member residence areas will have to change. I don't know that you'll necessarily have to change the EBD boundaries. They could stay, to my knowledge, they could stay as they are. And so there, while you start off with one, there's the confusion, there's the potential for confusion, thinking that, oh, if that's going to change, then will our EBDs will necessarily change. That's not necessarily the case. But I do, as the conversation that I initiated through Mr. Powers was, that we should be aware that we may, for some legitimate reason, want to or need to amend the boundaries of the EBDs. And so that could be done if we wish to continue to sync it up with the school board member residence areas or some of them.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Hurley. The other point of note, just because three of us were a part of the development when you brought forth the residence area map and all the things, we had to get that done in a really quick timeframe because the census data was really late. So since we had to do it in an odd year, I think it was in our December meeting in 2021 that we got it done, and we had Mr. Wesley Wilcox come in, and so there was quite a process for us to get there. But the other piece, in addition to census data that was used, was actually existing board member residences. So that's another part, for the two of you who weren't a part of that conversation, that actually where each one of us lived was also a part of the map generation, so that it was, that we couldn't essentially vote ourselves out of the district that we represented. And that's a part of the statute as well, I believe. So while census data was the crux of that development, it also included our individual addresses. So just for clarification for your information, so if this, you know, in eight years, seven years, whatever, from now, whenever the board will have to potentially look at this again, whomever is sitting here in these seats will have to consider not just census, but also where each individual member resides, and that has to be a part of the map creation. So just for information's sake. Reverend Cummings, what say you?
So I just, just one thing. With this option three, it changes every 10 years, or it can be in five years within that 10 years period?
The school board member residence areas necessarily change on the 10th year, but statute allows you to change it, you know, let's say, for example, everybody, it was common knowledge, so much development has happened in the Southwest, we need to make an adjustment to balance the populations because that's the perspective on this, because you all are providing representation in that.
And statute allows us to change it how often? Within the five year?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the beginning.
Statute will allow you to change it within five years, though.
You could change it in odd-numbered years.
Every other year.
Every other year. Okay. Personally, I like option three. It gives some consistency, some stability. And again, I don't, I was kind of thinking like Dr. James, that option two kind of takes some things out of our hands. It requires, we're a school board. We're supposed to do what we need to do. We don't need to be bound by other entities kind of directing us on what we need to do. So option three is my choice.
Okay. So Ms. Thrower, we have, unless Ms. Conrad has changed her position, we have two leaning towards option two and two leaning towards option three. So Ms. Thrower, we'll come back to you, Vice Chair. Thank you.
I appreciate having the options shared, and again, I would love to hear staff's recommendation as I consider my way through this. I appreciated all of the dialogue, and I do worry about the urban growth boundary because in terms of bulging, the conversation kind of died. But WEC North, there's been a lot of conversation about that previously up there in Irving and the old Ocala Jockey Club, and it doesn't look too urban to me right now. But so in terms of forward planning and doing what's best for Marion County public schools, that's where I'm at with this. So I would really appreciate hearing what staff recommends to help me come to a more informed decision.
I'll offer my second recommendation in a day and ask that Mr. Powers listen along with me here. I recall Mr. Powers saying, anybody can sue anybody for anything at any time. And I'd say that as a preface to my recommendation of option three. We know that Broward County at least has been using it. And there, I don't know if I'm accurate or not in terms of drawing any kind of correlation between it being statutorily required, and at least in that regard, it's something that you live with as a board, and is there any way that you would legitimately extrapolate that you're going to make other decisions based on that as well. But I would say Broward County uses this, has apparently used it for a considerable period of time, and we haven't heard of, I'm not aware of, any challenges to them. So in that regard, I would recommend three, given something that, to me as a planner, appears both expedient but reasonably cautious in terms of appearing to be time-tested or that.
Attorney Powers?
I would concur.
Okay. Oh, sure.
Yes, Vice Chair.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Because as I sit up here trying to make the most informed decision possible, and it means a lot to keep Marion County public schools at the forefront. You know, anybody can sue anybody over anything at any time, but that's, to me, that's not a reason to not move forward, you know. And getting the best and most expert input that we can, and then talking it over as a board, and then coming to a consensus is what I feel comfortable doing. So with all that being said, the only thing I don't like about school board member residence areas is that we could, according to my understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, we can only change it in odd years. Okay, so that means there's a lag, but based on the rest of it, I'm willing to accept that lag. So I can go with option three.
Vice Chair.
Reverend Cummings?
Mr. Hurley, Mr. Hurley, excuse me. How long has Broward County been using option three? Do you know?
I believe it's since the early 80s. Oh, no. Using option three, using the school board member districts, I don't recall offhand.
I think, I think you're about right. From what I understood, it's been since like, it's been a long time that they've done it, which I'm sure, as we just talked about, anybody can sue anybody at any time. But I think that's one more reason for that, because it's already been proven that it's been working. So.
Thank you. Ms. Conrad?
I just want to thank you for the input and the great discussion this morning, because although I was a fan of option two, and I really liked the flexibility that was made available to us because of the location of the districts, we only lose a little bit of flexibility with the third plan. And so I appreciate you sharing that Broward County has been using this map successfully for an extended period of time without any lawsuits coming forward. And I'm very interested in keeping us out of any mischief. So I can definitely go with option three. And again, I want to thank everyone for their discussion and bringing all concerns forward so that we're each able to make the best decision possible.
Thank you, Ms. Conrad. And I too can easily be, perhaps we should have led with the recommendation from staff and the attorney. That would have caused us an awful lot of conversation expediency, absolutely. But I leaned towards option two because I hadn't seen it yet. The team is aware that option three actually was the one that I put forth when we were beginning to start talking about this, because we had just done that. And so I'm grateful that this work has been done, and Mr. Hurley, that you put in the time to create an option two, because I appreciated that. And so that's why I was leaning towards that. But I too can absolutely get on board with option three was a part of helping create that at the time when we voted upon it. So I know what that work looked like and what it looks like, and how still with the amendment, as Attorney Powers has said, that if it's collected in one area, then we still could use it in an adjacent area. It only gives us a, we have a little bit smaller area in that District Four. Ms. Thrower, Vice Chair Thrower is kind of the center hub there with the largest population center. It's a little bit smaller than the option two, but it still gives us the ability to then use. And it also does not forsake, as the other one kind of did, those other growth centers that you mentioned. I know the counties have an extensive conversation about Marion Oaks, an extensive conversation about Silver Spring Shores, and our school board member residence areas kind of encapsulates that already. District Two already takes care of the shores in addition to a part of the forest and Oklawaha and some of those areas. And then District Three already takes care of Marion Oaks in addition to Dunellen. And so I appreciate, and then District One, that in this map, which is my district, takes some of the city of Ocala all the way out to Bellevue. And so I appreciate honestly the diversity within our district areas, live-in districts, that this gives us that flexibility, knowing where population centers are. And it's built on, population again, is how these were built. So you have consensus for option three. So on the next steps, that was number one, the school board consensus map option, you have option three. And then we need to, on your next steps, it says update impact fee ordinance to include that language. So did you have anything else to add, Mr. Hurley, before we turn it over to Attorney Powers?
Just closing remarks. And so the next steps, yes, as you said, school board consensus on the map option, and update the impact fee ordinance to include the EBD language. We'll be working with Mr. Powers and get that done.
Okay, great. We will go to Dr. Gullett's comments and then come back to Attorney Powers.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I have nothing additional. Thank you.
Okay, terrific. So Attorney Powers, at this point, the updating of the impact fee ordinance language to include the educational benefit districts certainly is something that needs to be done. But perhaps you want to lead the concluding discussion that I think is still kind of the hanging, I almost said hanging Chad. I'm not, I don't want to, that's a terrible thing to say in the state of Florida. But we still have that dangling modifier out there to say where this board wants to move forward with our draft ordinance with the five categories that we currently have in the Benish study that's been conducted. So would you like to kick us off there?
Sure, yes. So we've solved, I believe for now, one of two of the concerns. One of the concerns is the dual rational nexus test, the Santa Rosa issues, all those sort of things. If they could be said to apply in Marion County, there was some question about whether they even did. We've taken steps now with this creation of educational benefit districts to allay any fears and to make sure that that's taken care of. So that will be something I can write into the proposed ordinance and work with Mr. Mentor and Mr. Sexton to ensure that that's, you know, passes muster and everything's good. The second portion of that now comes to, the second portion that we didn't address with the educational benefit districts is the categories, and what do we do about expanded or different categories? That's a question that we have posited to the city. The city has given some feedback. It's, looks like there's going to need to be an ongoing discussion about what the data will support, whether the data is both accurate and complete, and whether it's a representative sample. That's something that the data analysts are going to need to tell us. For example, I mean, there are two concerns. One is, should we and can we use averages? And the second would be, if we do use the averages, is it a statistically significant sample size that we have now as opposed to a future product? And those are questions that the technical planners will need to work on and make sure that they've, they're able to come to those conclusions. If the data exists and we can get to that data, wonderful. Then the question becomes, can we also do that for each of the other municipalities? There has to be some standardization in order for things to be fair, in order for things to be fair and accurate and appropriate. We all have to be comparing the same types of data. So that is something that's not solved now, but will be solved through future communication and coordination. I don't have any, at this point, that is not a decision. How many categories we use, we'll have to see what the data, what data is there and what it comprised for us.
Understood, Attorney Powers, but I would believe that we as a board need to collectively determine, are we interested in continuing to pursue looking at additional categories and the time and potential cost it will take to endeavor that, or move forward with a draft ordinance with five categories that are, that I believe I heard Mr. Hurley offer as his recommendation, included, including the educational benefit districts, and then know that the opportunity therein lies for developers to have their own study about their own individual projects, which in the city individual meetings, there are significant projects that are either currently in process, currently in permitting, and/or have at least received their pass-through before they've actually even pulled permits. And so I can understand that there would be some of that forthcoming, but I believe, at this point, I think that this board needs to come to at least have a conversation about the interest in pursuing the additional study from Benish. And would that be your recommendation, Attorney Powers? So we've heard from Mr. Hurley. What would be your recommendation as far as expanding additional categories?
As to having developers run their own separate studies, I mean, although I've seen that happen with individual developments, as I said earlier, individual subdivisions, this is the first that I've heard today of that being a potential addition or substitution within our impact fee. So that is something that I think is a discussion that has to occur between probably the data analysts and the AI data analysts and our, the AICPs and technical folks from the city and, and school board. I don't, I, I can't render an opinion on that.
Okay.
Now, what I can render an opinion on is that it is, the, the categories as they exist, those five categories as they exist are a straightforward, they account for, I believe they, they, they absolutely pass any kind of constitutional muster that they adequately account for things. However, I also understand the fact of the, that, that the city or another municipality may want to take into consideration something on their own. And this is a group effort. I certainly understand that. So however, I think all along the common vein that I've had and I've said is that the more we stray from a core, the more we get a lot of different areas with perhaps the explanation that, well, if we don't do this, we could, you know, they could have a legal challenge. And if we, we should also do this because that will head off this legal challenge. And at some point, you're dividing a whole lot of things with a fear of litigation that I think actually increase the potential likelihood of it. So that being said, the sort of perfect answer when someone has a, has a problem with the way a plan is going is to say, I don't think that's legal. However, that's what gets people in court because people always, I mean, you could say the exact same thing. I could say, I could say that I believe that the core that we started with, the three or the five categories, is the safest legal path to proceed. And an attorney for a developer or attorney for a municipality could say the opposite. And ultimately, that's something that is best served by everybody talking it out as quickly as we can and trying to come to some rational conclusion as to what benefits everyone and everyone's okay with. Because ultimately, what my hope is, is that everyone involved in the process is going to stand behind the ultimate product and not say, well, they came up with it, or they did this, or they made us do that. Instead, that everyone will say, this is something we're all comfortable with. And that's therefore something that we can, we can defend mutually.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Vice Chair Thrower.
Thank you. And thank you, Attorney Powers and Mr. Hurley and Ms. DeBick. Thank you, Ms. DeBick, for presenting the timeline in this process. I think it's important because I am very comfortable with how open and willing we have been and really always are as, as a board to hear all input and, and concerns and try to make adjustments. Because in my big picture mind, we rise and fall together as a community. And so I am comfortable at this point with being very, just being very willing to bring this to a proper closure, get it voted on by the others that need to vote on it, and move forward. Moving into the future as other projects develop, I'll always be open to that conversation. So that's, that's where I am with this. I'm really glad to have had the conversation today about the educational benefits districts. I think that that was an important element. It's all been important. And I'm at the point where I feel like we've gone as far as we can go with the timeline that we know that we have to be on as the Marion County School Board, trying to get things done for kids. So I'm ready.
Thank you, Vice Chair Thrower. Reverend Cummings, were you leaning up next?
No, Cummings.
Okay. Dr. James.
Just to reiterate, if the city votes no, the county can't collect.
Not accurate. The city doesn't vote on the impact.
If the city chooses not to adopt the ordinance.
If the, if the city, the city and, under the interlocal agreement can withdraw from the interlocal agreement. So yes, if the, the proper question is, and if I may, I don't mean to, tell me if this is, what your question is, if the city flat opposes the collection efforts in every way they possibly could, then yes, ultimately it fails. Because they could withdraw from the interlocal agreement, they can withdraw from collection efforts, they can do all of those factors. And until we have enough of the overall population of the county to allow it to resume, it couldn't resume and, and impact fees could not be collected and growth in Marion County will result in underfunded schools. And that growth will not be paying its share into the collection. So yes.
Okay, thank you. But for further clarification, the ultimate vote on this though is in the county's hands for the ordinance itself. And then it would be up to the individual municipalities also to sign on to the amended interlocal agreement. So there's like two steps to this process. The ordinance itself, that is only between the school board and the county. And then the amended, or amendment to the interlocal agreement that I believe the technical working group is already working on being scheduled for first quarter, I believe, because that's the way the interlocal agreement reads, that they meet in the first quarter of every year.
Sorry?
Yes, sure.
That is the, the joint meeting of the local officials is to occur within the first quarter. And this is a, a little bit of an unclear period of time because the whole updated interlocal agreement was, was ratified, I believe it was May 4th completely. And we did have a, a technical working group meeting to finally get everything taken care of so that votes could occur January 23rd. It reads in the interlocal, the new interlocal agreement that was ratified May 4th, that the technical working group shall meet two times a year. So we are very close to getting a meeting of the technical working group scheduled. I believe there'll be some invites sent out and having all that buttoned up by next week. There is sales tax to discuss, so there's every good reason, you know, to, to have that meeting. But I've said from the beginning, and again, just speaking to the timeline that we've had on this whole impact fee, the technical working group is, in my mind, is, is not any kind of a slowdown for, for what we need to do. I feel like, you know, we're, we're very close to being in, in quicksand here. You know, I, I've continued to be really open and, and wanting to know from the city, you know, just, just give us what you, give us what you need so we can consider it, so we can keep moving, you know? That's a pretty simple ask. And we've got the categories. You know, that's, but I did want to clarify about the interlocal agreement and, and the timeline for that, to at least make that clear.
Thank you. Are there any other board comments that want to weigh in here? Ms. Conrad?
It's just been a really taxing process. And so thank you to everyone who has put work into gathering and presenting data for us. I too, I agree with Vice Chair Thrower. I feel like we've been very open, very accommodating. We've each, each attended every meeting. I believe that we've been asked to attend individually and as, as a whole. The recommendations that come forward, that we are solid in moving forward with what we've asked for. And the combination with us not getting the information that we're, we've asked for, I too am ready to move forward. And, and my position has changed some from our last meeting. But I feel like Benish did not have access to that data or it wasn't compiled and that's why it was not used in the study, which is how we ended up with our three categories, making accommodations for the county adding two. And so I just feel confident that where we're supposed to be. And so I just offer my comments on that and hope that we're ready to move forward with everyone's blessing. Because we are all working to better Marion County as a community. We are serving as the school board. But everyone, every citizen in Marion County benefits from the students succeeding in our schools. Because they are here as our doctors, our lawyers, our waitstaff, our nurses. Everyone in our community benefits from our students getting the best education possible. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conrad. Reverend Cummings, do you want to offer any comments? Okay. So to conclude this portion, then we'll open it up to public comment and move on to board comments. Just as each elected body would have this presented before them, knowing that each elected body is made up of five different individuals with five different perspectives. And so I'm speaking of the school board, the county commission, the city councils, the, and I'm saying city councils because there are a couple in the municipalities and, and the town councils and all, they, they all are five different individuals with a voting opportunity to choose an up or down vote on what the school board puts forth. This board member as an individual is content as well with the work that has been put in, with the recommendations coming from both our planner as well as our attorney, that we have concluded what needed to be done with educational benefit districts to get us to a draft ordinance that can be placed on our November 14th board meeting agenda. And we have ample time to get that hopefully written and published in plenty of time. It will be placed under discussion on the November 14th agenda. And with an up or down vote of the school board, if it is a up vote and we have at least three school board members voting in favor, the recommendation, sitting now as chair, and, and I'm speaking somewhat as chair because this is a timeline I originally set forth a few weeks ago. But if we have it on the November 14th agenda and we do receive three votes, then it'd also be placed on the first December meeting of the county commission for them also to have an up or down vote on the draft ordinance. I believe I hear at least three board members that are in favor of moving forward with that timeline and that direction. And that's where I sit as the chair, as well as an individual board member, that hopefully, Attorney Powers, that we can make these amendments to the draft ordinance that was already approved now that we have approved the educational benefit district and how that language needs to be written and all. And so you have a little bit of time, hopefully, to, to get that concluded before our published date of November 7th, I guess, November 6th, whatever, something like that, when we need to publish to get that done. I'm looking at publishing schedule, so let me, let me make sure that's going to work with what we're trying to do. I believe that still gets us. So we would need to publish next week in order for us to be good for that November 14th board meeting. So we have a, you know, five days or so to get that done. So that's where I sit as a board member and as chair. And with that, is there any public comment on this agenda item that we have discussed today?
Madam Chair, let me say this.
Yes, sir, Reverend Cummings, I'm sorry.
We all be on the same page?
Yes, I.
I do concur that we need to move forward.
Okay.
My, my stance has always been the same, that we don't delay, that we keep moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for weighing in. So we will move forward with that timeline, Dr. Gullett, as your team prepares the agenda for the November 14th board meeting that we, and Attorney Powers, that you'll be working on all this draft language and ensuring that all the information included with the five categories and the collection amounts and all the things, in addition to the new five educational benefit districts, all of that stuff will be buttoned up for this board to have a vote on, on November 14th. And then again, go ahead as a placeholder, if we can have communication between our staff and county staff, placeholder for them also for their first meeting in December, which is something we had originally, I know I originally spoke with a couple of county commissioners about that potential timeline. And we can move forward with that. So public comment, we did not have any. So moving on to individual board member comments and concerns, and I'll start with Mr. Davis. Anything out of the board clerk's office?
No, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, for serving us today. Attorney Powers?
Nothing further.
Thank you so much. Dr. Gullett?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, just, just a comment. I've shared from the beginning, this would be a difficult process. I am very mindful of those conversations that we've needed to have, but from the very beginning, when we took on the long-range study, brought that to the board, very public meeting, made recommendations, that we have been very public and very clear and very transparent. I appreciate the board's input in this process and working with us because we knew this would be challenging. But it's always been what's needed for our students. And so I know it makes some uncomfortable in this being a fairly new process for Marion County, but I'm very proud of the work that we're doing. We knew that it would require us to be flexible, get input from the community. And again, we've had public hearings, we had a joint county commission meeting, and we always were deliberate in the next steps guiding the process and asking for information. So appreciative of all of the staff members and elected officials out there that have worked with us, but just need to reiterate, we're, we're doing what we think is needed for our students. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Dr. James?
No comment.
Thank you. Reverend Cummings?
Thank you.
Ms. Conrad?
Just one quick comment. And Vice Chair Thrower's been updating, so you may have more information to share than I do. But we do have the space launch for NH Jones and North Marion that's coming, I think they're on their 10-day count. And so we just got an email that shared, and I apologize, I'm going to read part of it to you so I don't mess it up. If you are interested and you would like to watch the launch, NASA has an app, Next Space Flight, and you're able to watch the launch, which is scheduled for November 5th at 10:02. It doesn't say AM or PM. I have to check on that. And so I'm sure the app would give you a notification updating the time. So I, it's also going to be available on TV and on YouTube. So just a really exciting time for our community and our schools. And, and of course, I'm extremely invested in what goes on at Dr. NH Jones. So I'm super proud of the work that, that's going on there, the actual partnership that's happening with North Marion. So I just wanted to share that, make a note, download the app so we can all watch the launch and see the experiment from Marion County schools go up. It's just really exciting. So thank you.
Terrific, Ms. Conrad. Thank you. Vice Chair Thrower?
Thank you. And yes, would somebody please make sure that each board member gets that email and, because that would really be fun to take out to the community and maybe even subjects, suggest some places across our county, the size of Rhode Island, where they might be able to go to get a clear sighting, you know? That would really, really be neat. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Thrower. I just had a couple of quick things. First thing is just a reminder that we have another work session that's scheduled for next Thursday at 9:00 AM. Also, I received the information a bit late. I was trying to get it on Tuesday evening, but our Forest Boys Golf Team did qualify, or win district, actually on Tuesday in Palatka. All of our golf teams were in Palatka all day on Tuesday. And so Forest did win district. And then we also had two bowlers that have qualified for state. So kudos to our student athletes and the amazing work that they are doing on the field and on the course and on the court and all the places for that. And also just a, a quick note, board, and I hope to have more information for you at the, at the next work session, if in fact it's concluded or, or something done. Mayor Kent Gwen did reach out to me this week mentioning about him doing a proclamation in support of the nation of Israel and that he was going to reach out to the county commission about doing that as well. I know that proclamations aren't something as frequent that the school board does, the city and the county do them all the time. But it's not something that we do as often, but it may be potentially something I will bring to you. He is supposed to have the language and get that to me if, if that's something that we want to at least consider.
to at least consider and look forward to. So potentially November 2nd, we can have further conversation about that. But just wanted to bring that to your attention, that hopefully will be forthcoming. So with that, I believe that concludes, excuse me, that concludes our work session, and we will be concluding at 10:48 AM. Thank you so much.